Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida approving the final fire services assessment relating to the provision of fire protection services, facilities and programs in the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida for fiscal year 2015 through 16 commencing October 1st, 2015. Providing purpose and definitions, providing for the imposition and computation of fire protection assessments, incorporating the fire protection assessment report, providing for legislative determination of special benefit and fair apportionment, establishing the rate of assessment, directing the preparation of a final assessment role, providing for a disabled veteran's exemption, authorizing a public hearing and directing the provision of notice thereof and providing an effective date.
Thank you, Russell. Counsel?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve.
Okay.
No, I know. I'm turning it over to you in just a second. We're going to get way ahead of you, Marty. I know that you've got a presentation. So, let's do this. Why don't we get, see if there's any public comment, any members of public wish to comment on this resolution?
This is the fire report.
Yes, that's what we're on.
John Eastman, 4801, 188th Avenue. Again, we have the issue this year of having two fire departments. We've gone down with the discussion over and over on this. We don't need two fire departments. I think you can get these fire fees, almost $500 a household. That's a lot of money, if you think about it. And it needs to be trimmed. Davy does a great job. The projected costs of the broad wing property out there, initially I said it's going to cost you half a million dollars to put anything. What was the number? It was a half a million. So, hopefully, you're going to back up on that a little bit and not make that expenditure anytime in the near future and put that money into what we really need is a firehouse. But when you compare our budget, our fire budget, with all the other towns in the county, it's still pretty high. And, you know, Davy's doing the job. 2.3 calls a day per town, only 1.1 a day out west. So, you know, keep it in mind, let's get rid of this volunteer system and go back to just letting Davy do their job. Let's build a hardened station for them at some time in the very near future. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Mr. Barry Nunzig, 163rd and Sterling Road. Gentlemen, I'm talking about the volunteer fire department myself. Volunteer fire department is nothing more than a fraud. It's been a fraud since they weren't paid. Even their name is a fraud. They're not the volunteer fire department because they are being paid. So, that's the first thing. What else did they do? They lied to get paid. They gave you guys information when we went from Pembroke Pines to Davy, which made you think that we were losing service when we weren't. We were actually gaining service. But they lied about that so they could get you guys to pay them. Okay? They lie about Davy needing them. You've heard the Davy chief himself stand up in front of you guys and say, "We don't even consider the volunteers in our runs." When they go to a run, they don't care if the volunteers are there. They don't even think about them. Okay? They lie to you about having to bring in off-duty personnel. I have asked several times, tell me the last time you called in off-duty personnel to go to emergency. I get no response. Why? Because it doesn't happen. But they'll lie to you and tell you that it's needed. Okay? They lie to everybody about being able to do advanced life support. You saw it in your newsletter. Chief Bennett put in there, "We can do advanced life support." Everybody here knows that they don't carry drugs and they cannot do the advanced life support that's needed. Davy does it and they do an excellent job. Okay? They lied about needing a brush truck. Real simple. They asked for a brush truck over and over again. I pointed out, didn't use one in this town for over three years. All of a sudden, brush truck disappeared. Guess what? Everything's fine and dandy. No need for a brush truck. Okay? When they did have the brush truck and they drove it off the road, Lee Bennett lied about being the person driving it because the person who called me and told me about it knows Lee Bennett and said he wasn't there. It's just another lie. So, what other claims to fame do they have? Let's see. They left their district time after time again to run the calls all over this town just to show that they were doing something important. Okay? They left their district to come to a council meeting to try to intimidate you guys and to keep them on the job. Again, even the fire engine was here just telling everybody, "They're not needed over there." I guess the last one is, they're just not needed. I have given you guys the list of things on May 7th, questions asked the volunteer fire department, and you guys have not done your job because you haven't asked the questions. And you guys need to ask those questions. Go back and find my memo of May 7th. Ask the volunteers those questions and it would just point out dramatically that they're just not needed. It's a waste of money. And when we hear the storm come in here, don't forget, all those people are going to leave that area and go to the station on 148 and Sterling. And those people will really be without coverage. Get rid of the fraud of the volunteer fire department. Build a real station. Give the people out there the coverage they need. Thank you.
Thanks, Barry.
I think there's a major safety problem and Commissioner, Councilmember Bright Cruz has certainly spelled that out a number of times on the far west area of the town. The really critical thing is strokes and heart attacks. And both of those, you need quick delivery to a hospital, particularly strokes. There's very little you can do for anybody having a stroke except get them to the hospital where they can start working on them. We have our fire department for the western side here. It's an extreme one end of the area they cover. It just doesn't make any sense. We should have that, as we've all talked about before, we should have that located in the middle of the area so we have quicker access for transportation when you need it. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Any other members of the public wish to comment on this item? Seeing none, public comment is now over. We have a motion and a second to approve unless there's any additional questions, comments or concerns. Counsel? Seeing none, call a question, please, Russell.
Councilmember Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Councilmember McKay?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fisk Kelly?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes. And Marty, after the fact, I know that you had assessment introduction, legal requirements, rate history, and I know you spent a lot of time and effort on this. And for the record, please, proceed.
I know, it's protocol. You all just voted on the item. Now, you're asking him to make a presentation after the fact. Legally, it's not really sound because under any procedure, you know, he would just be talking just to talk. So, if the council would like a presentation, feel free to do one, but if not, move on to the next item.
Always good information. I know Steve, and listen, I got ahead of myself because quite frankly, you know, with regards to this process, our budget, the workshop, you know, it was just everybody doing such a great job. It's almost like, you know, we're here to, you know, this routine that we have established. And kudos to everybody up here in town, in town staff as well. I know this was something Marty presented as part of the workshop, so I'll leave it up to you all. You know, the information is always good, that's for sure. Steve?
Yeah, I mean, that would be my thought. Unless there's something legally prohibiting us from doing this, I mean, to me, you know, we've all seen the numbers. We've all gone through it in detail. So, it's not so much for the council, the presentation, but for the public and to get it on the record for anyone else who wants to hear it, I think it's important to get it out there.
So, maybe what we should do then, from this perspective, is go through all the items, vote on them, and then let Marty do a complete presentation from start to finish and then be done.
Fine. Okay, that's fine.
And it'll be online tomorrow.
And it'll be online.
Anybody else that wants to go to see it.
Okay. Item number six, resolution. Russell for the record.
This is a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida relating to the provision of solid waste services, facilities and programs to residential properties in the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida for fiscal year 2015 through 2016 commencing October 1st, 2015. Providing authority for solid waste services assessments, providing purpose and definitions, providing findings, incorporating the solid waste special assessment methodology report, approving the assessment role and providing an effective date.
Thank you, Russell. Counsel?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve. Any members of the public wish to comment on this item? Seeing none, public comment is now closed. Counsel, again, you get a motion and a second to approve. Any additional questions, comments or concerns? Seeing none, Russell, call the roll, please. Call the question, I'm sorry.
Councilmember Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Councilmember McKay?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fisk Kelly?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes. Item number seven. There's some, you can, for the record, Russell, do the resolution and then I've got some house cleaning duties here to include as part of the record.
Okay. A resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, approving and adopting the tentative millage rate for taxation of real property lying within the boundaries of the Town of Southwest Ranches for the fiscal year 2015-2016 fiscal year commencing October 1st, 2015 and ending September 30th, 2016, providing severability and providing for an effective date.
Thank you, Russell. For the record, pursuant to Florida statute 200-065 and all that other stuff, the first item to be discussed tonight is the percentage increase in millage over the rollback rate and why. For fiscal year 2015-2016, the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida is considering a levy of 4.3354 mills, which is a 7.95 percent increase over the rollback rate of 4.0162. This increase primarily results from the funding of roadway service refacing and drainage project townwide through the Transportation Surface Drainage Ongoing Rehabilitation Capital Improvement Program, also known as TIS-DOR. TIS-DOR represents $466,700 from the proposed budget book. Additionally, this budget provides for the funding of multiple program modifications, public safety parks, recreation and open space, PROs, and other transportation capital improvements. The millage for operating purposes without the TIS-DOR project remains at the Town of Southwest Ranches historical rate of 3.9404 mills. After numerous advisory board meetings, council discussions and workshop, the revised budget totals $14,504, $504,645. This includes a general fund budget totaling $10,655,783, well over half of which provides for police, fire protection and rescue services, a capital projects fund budget totaling $458,305 to not just maintain facilities but also improve our public safety as well as PROs infrastructure, special revenue funds budget comprising of the transportation fund totaling $14,473,880 to maintain as well as improve roadways, and the volunteer fire fund totaling $140,291. A debt service fund budget totaling $735,487, which provides for one year's principal and interest payments on existing loans, and finally, an enterprise fund comprised of solid waste, bulk waste and recycling utilities budget totaling $140,899. The millage rate and budget require two public hearings. The initial hearing is tonight with the fiscal, with the final hearing and adoption schedule for Tuesday, September 29th, 2015 at 6 o'clock PM. With that, I'll take a motion on resolution number seven.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any members of the public wish to comment on this item?
Noel Hollingsworth, 199th Avenue. On the infrastructure's part of the budget, I haven't had time to come in and talk to Marty and stuff about it, so I'd like for him to just use round numbers if he could this evening. Taking the entire infrastructure area and you remove the TIS-DOR part and those that are budgets last year which are carried over to be finished this year, what is the amount of new money that is being put into the budget for infrastructure this year? Thank you.
Thank you, Noel.
Hi, John Eastman, 188th Avenue. We've done a lot of work with the drainage. I mean, things are getting good. The hotspots are getting taken care of. I think it's money well spent. Great jobs being done. TIS-DOR, I've expressed my dissatisfaction with the way it's being done as far as how to pay for it and who gets the benefits for what they're paying. We're just getting into our first year of this, so we're putting our first blacktop down. But, you know, the 205th area there doesn't really even need repaving right now. I mean, it's convenient to do it because we're in that area, but we're actually paving some streets there that don't have any potholes. They could probably go another 15 or 20 years. And, you know, there's a balance there. So, I think that as we move forward with the TIS-DOR program, it needs to be tweaked and you need to tweak how people are being taxed and assessed for it. And, you know, Bob Bush has approached you many times, there's more than one way of doing it in a fair and equitable method. And the way we're doing it right now is not it. And we certainly need to look at these roads and not be paving roads that are in nominal condition. I mean, we have some roads that are really falling apart and they should be done first, even if we have to pay a little bit of extra money to drag the equipment out there. And speaking with some of the pavers in the area, it's not really that big a deal as everybody makes it to be. They want to do the work, they'll get their equipment out there. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Bob Hartman, Chair of the Drainage Committee. I agree with John. We need to tweak the TIS-DOR plan on an annual basis. Last year, we had gone with the original plan that was put together for the distribution of what roads would be done when, and Cleed had asked us to put kind of a rolling five-year review in place so that we can keep looking out in the calendar to determine whether we think that he and the plan are heading down the right path. I believe it was Freddie and Vince brought back some changes that we're making in, I think it was year five or six, for the next TIS-DOR block. So, I agree. This thing does need to be looked at on an annual basis. We built a mechanism into the Drainage Committee to review and make, of course, corrections that might be necessary. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Robert?
Bob Bush. We really came up with a plan that's extremely simple. We're just going to pave everything. We'll do some over there, we'll do some over there. We just keep doing it until we get done and we'll do it all over again. Gets the roads done. However, it's not the smartest way of doing it. And we need to really look at a lot of areas. And it's very hard to tweak this system once you start it. Because once somebody's got, you know, some roads in there and then you come along and say, "Hey, we want to do something a little different," they say, "Fine, you know, the town's put my roads in and I'm home free." We have lots of areas in the town, rolling oats, for example, probably really doesn't need any major changes for another 10, 11 years. And they won't get any for another 10 or 11 years. So, they'll pay taxes for the next 10 or 11 years and not really receive anything. I don't mind paying taxes when I get something for it. In my case, I'm pretty well on the schedule for about the second or third year. Pretty good deal for me. But for an awful lot of people, it's not a very good deal. We could do it smarter. And we need to look at that really before we get entrenched in just doing the simple solutions. And I think we're starting to see that. Thank you.
Thanks, Robert. Any other public comment on this item? Seeing none, Russell, call a question, please.
Councilmember Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Councilmember McKay?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fisk Kelly?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes. And Noel, when Marty does his presentation, I promise you that he'll answer the questions about the monies less the TIS-DOR. Promise. Item number eight, read the resolution, please, Russell.
This is an ordinance of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida approving the budget of the Town of Southwest Ranches for fiscal year 2015 through 16 commencing October 1st, 2015 and ending September 30th, 2016. Providing for a budget basis, providing for expenditure of funds, providing for carryover of funds, providing for notice, providing for severability, providing for conflict and providing for an effective date.
Thank you, Russell. Counsel?
I should approve.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve. Any members of the public wish to comment on this item? Seeing no public comment, public comment is now closed. Again, Counsel, we have a motion and a second to approve. Any additional questions, comments or concerns on this item? Seeing none, Russell, call a question, please.
Councilmember Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Councilmember McKay?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fisk Kelly?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes. Okay. Professor Sherwood? The floor is all yours.
Thank you once again, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmember and the residents of Southwest Ranches. Getting back to our PowerPoint, we covered the summary of all proposed rates that were just recently adopted. We're going to go into the detailed PowerPoint on a quick review basis, moving into our fire fees specifically. The introduction we're going to cover is three components and the fact that the assessment methodology is unchanged from the prior year and it's pursuant to a 2012 consultant study. We have a slide on the assessment legal requirements, our proposed and actual rates history by category, and then we have a nice municipal rate comparison across all Broward County. Our legal requirements, this assessment is permitted by Florida statutes, chapters 166.021 and 166.041. An ordinance 2009 requires that the annual rate be established within Southwest Ranches each year. And historically, for Southwest Ranches, the only parcels exempt are nine residences owned by eligible disabled U.S. military veterans, which total $3,951, and that's an increase of one from the prior year. Our categories are presented. First slide has our residential and our vacant agricultural. You'll see the downward arrows representing our increase, decrease, excuse me, our decrease of the $35 previously mentioned. We need to be particularly proud that the decrease is below our fiscal year 2012 number of $442.51. The new rate proposed for residential at $439.02 is below our fiscal year 2012 rates. Our next category are our per square foot building area by category. They also show a downward trend in conformity with all the rates, fire rates throughout. Moving to our municipal comparisons, our number of municipalities subsidize the fire protection assessment with property tax. That's general fund revenue. Several don't even assess a fire protection assessment and therefore fund 100 percent from their general fund. Southwest Ranches policy does not subsidize any fire protection costs from its general fund. The following reflects only the actual amounts for 1450 and reported proposed rates for 1516. Municipalities with an identical assessment are likely subsidizing operations from the general fund taxes. The Town of Southwest Ranches remains the highest in Broward County by only $1.02 annually. The next below us is City of Lauderdale and is one of only two municipalities projecting a rate decrease for fiscal year 2016. All other municipalities which may not provide general fund subsidies project a 3.57 percent increase to a 36.55 percent increase in rates. The next two slides are a table of the comparative rates for those that assess a fire rate. You will see the red showing a decrease from year to year. I presented on the slides in blue for the first time. Moving to the second slide, there are two municipalities that are reaching the $400 level, 408, 438. So, everyone has either no change or increase except for Southwest Ranches and one other city, Lauderdale Lakes. Moving over to the solid waste rates, introduction, that's our garbage rate assessment. I'll be covering the legal requirements and a comparison to our prior year rates. Our solid waste rate assessment, the legal requirements are permitted per Florida statute chapters 197.3632, and the annual rate establishment is required in Southwest Ranches by Town Ordinance Our table, it's our proposed Southwest Ranches solid waste rates for fiscal year 1516 with the changes from 1415. And throughout, you will note that the increase is less than 2 percent increase overall on an annual basis depending on lot square footage. Our solid waste impact, we've had in the past approximately 36 percent decrease over three years primarily resulting from changes in both our collection and disposal contractors. A small increase in rates is proposed for fiscal year 2016 and, as mentioned in our council communication, are due to contractual increases and mandates. That's cost of living and fuel adjustments. The fiscal year 2016 residential solid waste customer increase, as previously mentioned, are less than 2 percent overall and range from 70 cents to $9.80 annually depending on lot square footage. That covers our solid waste. Moving over to our tentative millage rate, our first public hearing tonight, we're going to cover four slides, four areas. One is our millage trend for operating. Then, we're going to go into millage proposed for TIS-DOR, our municipal rates compared throughout all Broward County. And then, an interesting final slide will cover our Southwest Ranches millage percent to our total direct and overlapping millage. Here is our famous eagle. The eagle is flying steadily and consistently across primarily 3.94, which is our historical rate over the past, as proposed. It'll be our sixth year. Our TIS-DOR for 1516, as mentioned, is $466,700 and represents .3950 mills. Our comparison, which will be of all of Broward County, we're presently at the historic rate plus TIS-DOR at the seventh lowest combined operating and debt millage rate in all of Broward County, including the unincorporated area. The proposed fiscal year 16 millage rate, including TIS-DOR, moves Southwest Ranches to eighth place in combined operating and debt service millage rate. Without TIS-DOR, Southwest Ranches would actually be in sixth place. In short, the relative position of Southwest Ranches, even with the TIS-DOR millage, among all Broward County municipal services providers, remains within the upper 25 percentile. That means it's lower than 75 percent of all Broward County municipal providers. The two slides shows us our ranking, number eight, and it's highlighted in brown at 4.3354, which has been approved. The interesting analysis of these two tables, moving into the two slides, which includes the ranking of all 32, including unincorporated Broward, was that there are eight that stayed the same. We had 13 that actually increased millage and we've had 11 that decreased millage. So, it's all over the place with up and down and staying the same. Our total, our final slide as it pertains to millage, presents our direct total overlapping and direct property tax rate, which shows that the Southwest Ranches portion represents less than 25 percent. Exactly 23.58 percent of the residential tax bill only pertains and comes to Southwest Moving over to our tentative budget, our first public hearing again for tonight, the total general fund revenues, which was read into the roll, is $10,655,783. Primarily are at valorem taxes at $5,123,150. It's about 48 percent. Our second and third is franchise and utility taxes in ranking and our special assessment revenue, that is our fire assessment revenue, for our top three revenue sources. Where do our funds go? You'll see the green line far right, almost 52 percent is our public safety. That includes our police, our fire and volunteer fire, general government, the second, and our general fund transfers, which includes debt service in those components, and transportation-related expenditures represent our third highest category. Our general budget is... Our general budget assumptions that we followed, it was presented in summary document format. The objective was keeping rates down while meeting our costs. No additional borrowing. We utilize conservative projections, revenues, and expense wide and maintaining service levels while addressing council and advisory board policies as well as priorities. Within the budget, we were able to maintain the operating millage. All of the following items are funded. We have two fire department and one joint fire department, police department capital improvements, as well as the SCBA and bunker gear replacement items. We have Colusa Corners, PROs, staffing adjustments to assist PROs throughout the year, town hall improvements. We're looking forward to the new roof for the town hall. We are suggesting, proposing the council agenda workflow improvements, the plating of our broad wing parcel, as well as numerous transportation projects as outlined in later slides. Our funded program modification highlights is the broad wing parcel plating. As mentioned, the administrative assistant and contractual seasonal assistant for the Parks Recreation and Open Spaces Department includes council agenda workflow software. And finally bunker gear and self-contained breathing apparatus. That's the SCBA replacement programs. Our capital improvement project requests that are funded in our proposed budget. This slide is directly related to Mr. Hollingworth's question. You will see this is all new money for the new year. The total had $1,554,815. What we would need to do is subtract out the TISDOR component and it would leave us the new money, does not include carryovers, of $1,088,115. Simple subtraction from this slide, less the TISDOR of $466,700. Our process, our calendar events, we've been checking as we go along. We're up to the third check, which is our September 15th, which is tonight. We've covered the first public hearings for the tentative millage and budget adoption and the final fire and solid waste assessment adoption. We need to do the advertisement, be forthcoming between September 24th and September 27th. And our final public hearing, which will be our second, is Tuesday, September 29th, And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Marty. And again, Vice Mayor, Council, and staff, just to recognize the status of the town's finances and also confirmation with regards to this budget and what an outstanding job that everybody has done. And again, even with TISDOR, we had a couple of comments about the TISDOR, we're still number eight out of 31 municipalities. And if you include unincorporated Broward, that would be 32. And when I say Professor Sherwood, I say that with a lot of compassion and respect, Marty. We realize the time and effort that you put together for this presentation. It has never been more clear, more concise, page-by-page explanation of all the different summaries and scenarios with regards to all the different categories, assessments, millage rates. I mean, just an outstanding job. And we all appreciate your time and effort and recognize just what a great job you did, not only up here, but members of the public who have access to this information as well. There isn't anything that you put together that isn't explained in detail. So shocked and surprised if there are any questions because it's all there and it's all included. But kudos to you and Rich and again, all the staff for an outstanding, standing job. And appreciate it very, very much, Marty. Really, really do.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, so with that being said, that concludes really our budget hearing. Again, Vice Mayor, members of the council, Andy, staff, just an outstanding job. I think it's unprecedented with regards to, you know, this process and the amount or lack thereof of comments. When you have a workshop on your budget, Newell Hollisworth has nothing to say? That means, that means something, that's for sure. And he's looking at me funny. And you didn't say anything at the workshop, Newell. You had one question tonight and hopefully Marty answered that for you. But, but great job, Council. Great job, Andy. Great job, Marty, Rich, and all the other staff members. Just outstanding job. And again, this is our first public hearing. The next one again is scheduled for, help me, help me, September?
29th.
29th. Okay, September 29th. Okay, that concludes again our budget hearing. I will take, unless there's any additional questions, comments, or concerns, Council, I will move to adjourn if you give a motion in a second and I'm sure that it'll be unanimous.
Some motion?
Second.
Motion is second to adjourn and I'm sure it is unanimous. This meeting, budget hearing, is hereby adjourned. Thank you all. Board of Directors, would you call the roll, please, Russell?
Board Member Breckers?
Here.
Board Member McKay?
Here.
Board Member Jablonsky?
Here.
Vice Chair Fisk Kelly?
Here.
And Chair Nelson.
Here. We all stand for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
I think all our heads are getting sore, all these hats that we're putting on throughout the course of the evening. Okay, if we can get the motion is second to approve the minutes for the May 14, 2015 meeting?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second to approve those minutes. Russell called the roll, please.
Board Member Breckers?
Yes.
Board Member McKay?
Yes.
Board Member Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Chair Fisk Kelly?
Yes.
Chair Nelson.
Yes, and one of the most important things, well, there's a few other important things that we're doing, but I want to call Chief Bennett up with, he's got some updates on some of the equipment, some new and old engines, the acquisition and sale. But even more important, he's going to introduce us to the new Assistant Fire Chief, Chris Perino. So with that being said, Chief, welcome. Always a pleasure to see you. And Assistant Chief, I just had an opportunity to meet you and say hello and welcome. It's a pleasure. The microphone is all yours, Chief.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Chris Perino is a 26-year veteran of the City of Miami Beach Fire Rescue. He came up through the ranks and was the EMS Division Chief. Chris was also instrumental in the Class 1 Fire Department making it happen. So he's very familiar with the Fire Department operations and is going to be an asset to our, to our department.
Fantastic, fantastic.
I'll turn it over.
Absolutely, Chris. Come on.
Good evening.
Good evening. Good, good to see you.
Thank you. Very happy to be here.
Speaking of the mic just a little more.
Met Chief Bennett several months ago and have had the opportunity to meet some of the people here around town hall. Met you all this evening and looking forward to getting started.
Thank you, Chris. Again, welcome. I'm going to put on hold because I know that you've got some things to talk about, the status of the new and the old engines and this, obviously the acquisition and sale. But before we do that, if I can get a motion in a, in a second, and if you all have any questions of Chris, by all means, but if we can get a motion in a second to appoint Assistant Chief Perino to the Assistant Chief's position for the Volunteer Fire Department.
Make a motion to appoint his Assistant Chief Volunteer Fire Department.
Got a motion in a, in a motion in a second? I've lost some words. I lost my train of thought. Sorry about that, but we have a motion in a second. Would you call the, call the question, please, Russell? Again, voting to approve the Assistant Chief, Mr. Perino.
Mayor, can I just make a quick clarification?
Sure.
The item on the agenda is for the appointment of the Assistant Chief, but it's also as the?
Okay, in addition to, and again, these were Leslie's responsibilities, absolutely for the record, appointment, you also be the Vice President of the corporation and the Treasurer of the corporation. So, you know, it's your last opportunity, Chris, to say yea or nay. You're assuming all these additional responsibilities as well.
I'd be happy to fulfill those responsibilities.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Russell?
Need me to modify that motion at all or no?
Um, to include, I guess.
Just clarify for the record that you included all three positions.
Okay. I include all those three positions included in that position.
Thank you, Doug. Will you call the?
Second.
I'm sorry, Gary. Call the question, Russell?
Chair Breckers?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Council. Board Member Breckers, excuse me.
Promoted.
Board Member McKay?
Yes.
Board Member Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Chair Fisk Kelly?
Yes.
And Chair Nelson.
Yes. Assistant Chief, welcome to the town of Southwest Ranches.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Chief Bennett, an update on new and the old engines.
Okay, we'll start off with Engine 82, which is our current engine. We have had a couple of points of interest, but to no avail of anybody purchasing or offering anything for the truck. We, on a tenth of this month, we lowered it to 44,000. So we've gone from 65,000 down to 44,000 at this point. So we're trying to make it happen and I'm sure it will happen soon.
Great. Any other additional information? Any other thing you'd like to pass along to the Board of Directors with regards to the Volunteer Fire Department, other than things are going very well?
Things have been going excellent. I think bringing Chris on board is going to be a real asset to the division and now everything's been working real well. We've been on all the calls and everything's been working real well.
Great, great. Chief, always a pleasure. Good to see you. Appreciate your, your time. Okay, that concludes new business. Any, Board of Directors, any additional questions, comments, or concerns?
Just curious on the delivery date for that new vehicle.
I had contacted vendor as of today even, and he said the middle of the month of October, towards the end of October. And I'm still pressing him, I want a hard date that we're going to receive this.
But at the moment, by Halloween.
Yes, yes. So I'm on it. In fact, I've been working with Andy quite a bit on this.
Okay, great. Freddie?
Yeah, Chief, I got a little problem. What are we going to do for a brush truck now when you get this engine? Because it's not an off-road vehicle. What are we going to do for brush fires?
Currently, what we've been doing, we've just been, we've been called out by the City of Pembroke Pines, we've been called out by Davie. We've just been using our engine. But, you know, down the road, Andy and I talked about possibly looking into a brush truck, but that'd be down the road.
You know, our town, the way it's situated, a brush truck is almost a necessity because, you know, we got someplace 10, 20 acres and they got to get into in some of those places. And like I say, we need a brush truck, some kind.
Yes. Yeah, we, it's something that we do have, you know, in mind and we're looking at different options of how we can do it with very low costs.
Okay, Board of Directors, any additional questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, that concludes the agenda. I'll take a motion in a second to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion is second to adjourn and I'm sure that it is unanimous. Again, the meeting of the Southwest Ranches Volunteer Fire Department Rescue Board of Directors has concluded. Thank you all very much. Okay.
Mayor, I just need one minute if possible, just as?
One, absolutely, absolutely. One minute, just a, one-minute warning. And this is our regular meeting. This is a pretty impressive council going through three different meetings tonight. This might be unprecedented and I'm not sure if we've ever done that before. We might be, you know, this might be historical between our budget hearing and Board of Directors meeting and now a regular council meeting. And it's only 7:30. That's pretty darn impressive. Okay, I'm going to call this meeting to order. Again, Vice Mayor, Council, Town Staff, always a pleasure, members of the public, thank you so much for, for being here. With that, call this meeting to order and will you do the roll call, please, Russell?
Here. Council Member McKay?
Here.
Council Member Jablonsky?
Here.
Vice Mayor Fisk Kelly?
Here.
Mayor Nelson.
Yes, we all stand for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Okay, it is indeed an honor and a privilege to introduce this next young man who we just love and adore. And if you all remember, you know, it wasn't that long ago that, that he had office space over here. So we had access, but needless to say, we do, we do miss him. And he's just a tremendous help. He's a friend of the town of Southwest Ranches, a friend to all of us. We can't say enough about, about Marty and the things that, that he does. If ever there was a definition of a true public servant that loves his job and does an outstanding job, they would have Marty in his picture next to the definition. So again, it's a pleasure and honor and a privilege to introduce the next, I think, property appraiser.
Amen.
Well, I think we're all on board with that. And we all support, we all support Marty.
Oh, thank you, thank you so much.
So Vice, Vice Mayor, it's just always a pleasure to see you, anytime.
Thank you so much, Jeff. That is, that is such a nice welcome. I can't tell you how much I appreciate that. And may I actually hand these out to the?
Sure.
Thank you so much. This is kind of about one?
Russell, good to see you.
How you doing?
I can't tell you, that was, that was a very nice introduction.
We felt in this is good, Marty. We love you.
Oh, I love you too. And you know what, I have to tell you, I miss representing Southwest Ranches so much. You know, it was, I always thought it was the most amazing thing. When I was in the legislature, there were nine cities in my statehouse district. And the one when it came to population, the smallest, was Southwest Ranches. But I got more emails from the residents of Southwest Ranches than anybody else. And I'm still trying to figure out who Watch Wagler was. I have no idea. I keep asking, Mary Gay won't tell me, you know? And, you know, it's, it really is such a pleasure to be here. And I want to tell you, I think you all have done such an incredible job with Southwest Ranches. As you know, I've, I've lived in Davie just about my entire life. And Southwest Ranches is just a gem in our 31 cities. I mean, it's the only city, the only real city where it's just not paved over. You have open space. It's really an amazing place and I just love it and I think that everybody up here does an incredible job. It really does. And I also want to thank my buddy Andy over there. You may not know this, four years ago, when I was running for the county commission, he lived in Tamarack in the district that I'm representing and he did not slam the door in my face. So thank you for that. I appreciate it.
And Marty, I know you're here to do a presentation on the Yellow Dot Program, but we just, again, we adore you. It's always a pleasure to see you. So the floor again is all yours.
Well, let's clarify, not only is he the Vice Mayor of Barack Hattie right now, but he's also running for property appraiser for the, for Broward County. So we thank you for stepping up the plate and running. Hope nobody runs against you. We look forward to you being the next property appraiser.
And we think the next property appraiser in Broward County, absolutely.
Oh, thank you.
Your county would be well-served, I'll tell you that.
Oh, thank you so much. And, and I'll tell you, I was excited to come here all day. And let me just quickly talk about what I'm, I'm here on, something I'm very excited about. And it was very, very nice of you all to put me on the agenda to speak about this. This is called the Yellow Dot Program. And the Yellow Dot Program, let me explain that. About a year ago, the Florida Legislature passed a very good bill. And the bill basically said that counties, if they want, can adopt what's called the Yellow Dot Program. And the reason they did that is because every once in a while you have a terrible accident and first responders will arrive to the scene of the accident. And the passenger or the driver at times will be unconscious or non-responsive. And the paramedics and first responders try to provide as much treatment to that person that they can, but there's only so much information they know about them. So what they do is they put them on a stretcher, they rush them to the hospital, the nearest hospital, and they hope that they'll be safe. And so the first responders had asked the legislature to give counties the ability to figure out a way to give first responders more information when they get to the accident. So what they did was they passed the Yellow Dot Program. And what that says is if a person wants to participate in the program, they're given a little yellow decal and a little folder. And the yellow decal goes on the back of their car. And on the yellow folder, they put certain pertinent medical information. pertinent medical information into the folder. It's not information where people can steal your identity, but information that gives, that gives information to first responders, whether it's, whether you are HIV positive, or if you've had cancer, or what your blood type is, information that can help give them, if you have seizures...
Diabetic.
Right, diabetic, that give them the ability to give treatment to people on the scene that are unconscious. And the reason that they needed a law to do this was before this is passed, it's illegal for a first responder to go into somebody's glove box, for example, and because it would be under the search and seizure clause of the, in the Constitution, they're just not allowed to do this, but the yellow decal gives the first responders the permission to go in there and also tell them there's information in there. And this is very exciting, it's something the County Commission voted on unanimously, and I believe when it's implemented, it's gonna save lives, and what we found was, for the first thirty thousand decals and folders, no, first hundred thousand decals and folders, it's gonna cost approximately thirty thousand dollars. And so the County Commission was hoping that the cities would partner up with the county on this program, and so I've been going to all of the cities and asking if they would participate, and we're asking for a amount of money in that corresponds with the population of the city. So, for example, when I go to Lazy Lake, they owe us zero dollars, but they can participate, and so far, nine cities that I've spoken to have agreed to participate in this program, and I'm coming to ask if Southwest Ranches would also participate with us as well. If Southwest Ranches wanted to participate, the amount would be approximately a hundred and twenty-two dollars, and, you know, it's, it's somewhat of a nominal amount, but I think it's an important amount, and if I can get this going, and it will, if we hit fifteen cities, I'm almost there, this'll be ten if you guys approve it, I really believe that this is something that will save lives, and that's why I'm here today. Also, I was very excited to come here. Please don't tell any of the other cities I said this, but I'd be more excited to come here today than any of the other cities I've went to, because I really love this town, and, and I, you know, I have to tell you this, between us, when I'm allowed to move out of my district, right now I can't move anywhere but where I live, in Davie, or in Plantation or Sunrise, and those are wonderful areas, but in a couple years, I won't be a County Commissioner anymore, and I'm really thinking about moving here, because I can tell you, there is, oh, thank you, if you all will have me.
Love to have you.
And I'll tell you why. I loved growing up. My father and my mother, we had an acre of land, it was the most amazing place in West Davie to live, and the only areas where you can live like that anymore in this county is either West Davie, Southwest Ranches, and maybe up in Parkland, and I just love this town. So there's a possibility that, that I may be a resident one day, if you all will have me, but I just wanted to go there. Thank you, thank you so much. Oh, thanks.
We'd love to have you.
Oh, absolutely. I don't know, that kind of makes me rethink about moving out. Keith and Russell are wonderful. You have a wonderful attorney, and he's very smart, does a great job, and, you know, and by the way, Keith has figured out how to get things out of the county that I have not figured out yet. There are issues where I have no clue how it happens, but he just gets it done, and he is just great. And Russell, I've been driving poor Russell crazy for years, ever since he was the clerk at the Town of Davie, and you just have a wonderful staff. So with that said, would very much appreciate Southwest Ranches monetary support for this wonderful program.
Do you need a motion for this?
I don't, I don't think we...
I was gonna say, can we just tell Marty to tell, give Marty a check?
I think, I think you got unanimous...
We're on board.
...support, you can...
We're on board.
You can put us in as one of, again, add to your list of seven or eight, make it nine, we're on board and supportive, Marty, absolutely.
Thank you so much, I really appreciate it, Mayor.
And Andy's gonna come up with a hundred and twenty-two dollars and twelve cents.
Thank you, Andy, and I told Andy...
I had a petty cash tonight, right?
Preferably before you leave, no problem.
And I told Andy, I love Andy, but he's moving out of Broward County, and I told him if I lose by one vote, it's his fault. But thank you all very, very much, and I would actually stick around for the meeting, I would, I would have, and I apologize that I'm leaving a little bit early, but it's my job to tuck my, my six-year-old in tonight, so...
That's much more important, that takes precedence, we know that.
Mayor, I just want to say one thing.
And Keith, yes.
Yeah, I just want to personally thank, and I know all the council members know it individually, but so that the members of the public know it, personally thank the Vice Mayor for his assistance in two things that he did for Southwest Ranches lately. One was, you all know about the funding for the Griffin Road Guard Rails, that was in the budget, placed in there through the support and help of the Vice Mayor, and that will be approved next week, I think.
It is, it's, we're in our budget hearings now, but it'll be very soon.
Very soon, so we thank you for your help in finally getting that project funded, and then, secondly, although even the County Attorney's Office still says today that the water law, the one that says you have to test or connect, I've gotten the sixth email saying this is not applicable to the Town of Southwest Ranches, even though the state thinks it is, we think it is, and everyone else thinks it is, so we thank you for your support and working with her to get her to finally remove that language from the code. That's very important.
Absolutely, without doubt, and I'll, I'll bring it up to her tomorrow. May I ask one other quick question? There's, there's an issue tomorrow that I just thought about, and I wanted to make sure Southwest Ranches knew about it, and I'm not sure if your residents utilize it, but there's somewhat of a concerning elimination tomorrow. Out west here, as you know, we don't have a whole lot of transportation options, even though Uber will be coming back very soon, I can tell you that, which, which is good, absolutely, and, but, is anybody here familiar with the five ninety-five express bus that leaves? There's a bus that leaves, oh, you have that on for today?
Vice Mayor brought it tonight, yeah.
Wonderful. Why, I plan on opposing that tomorrow, probably don't have the votes, but it concerns me because, as you know, we really don't have a whole lot of transportation options out here, and even though right now, the ridership on that bus may not be all that spectacular, I have a feeling it's gonna grow, and the people that do utilize that bus are, you know, they utilize it consistently, they need it to get them to and from where they need to be, and so, I guess, is it possible, I know you all are speaking about it today, if it's something that Southwest Ranches is concerned about, is there any way that you all could let me know in the morning?
Absolutely.
That would be great, thank you so much, I appreciate it. Thank you, Andy, thank you.
We appreciate that opportunity.
Mayor, if I may?
Sure, absolutely.
Vice Mayor, you had mentioned that's tomorrow. The, the information I have, there's a public hearing, this is Thursday, September seventeenth?
Oh, I'm sorry, it is Thursday.
Oh, it is, okay, I just want to make sure that was correct.
It is, that's, that's my mistake, you know, usually our hearings are on Tuesday, but they've been moved to Thursday the past couple weeks, it's kind of thrown us off, so I apologize about that.
Not a problem, just wanted to make sure we were correct, thank you.
You're a hundred percent right, thank you so much.
Marty, great to see you again, the next Broward County Property Appraiser.
Thank you, Marty.
Vice Mayor Marty Care. Thanks for everything that you do, Marty, always a pleasure to see you. Okay, item number four, public comment.
Mayor, we have three speakers tonight, starting with...
Vince Valetta, John Eastman, and Barry Nunzig, in that order.
Thank you.
Vince Valetta, Luray Road, Southwest Ranches, Sunshine Ranches. I'm representing Sunshine Ranches' vaude this evening, and it's always good to see Martin, and we wish him well in all his endeavors, but I'm here tonight again because of the situation that has taken place, this kind of a board meeting, and I wanted to bring it to your attention, because it seems, excuse me, it seems like the Mustang Trail has become the boulevard of choice for the cut-through traffic, and it's getting to be exasperating for the people that are living on Mustang. They were very pleased when we paved the road for them, but the road now is being used through the cut-through traffic. They have some suggestions, which they brought up at the homeowners' meeting, which they were thinking of maybe some rumble strips at different intersections before the stop signs, because not only are they cut-through, but they are speeding. We were going to address the administrator to see if you could get the police department to put a policeman somewhere in the neighborhood for some citations, because the traffic has increased over fifty percent on Mustang Trail, and they're getting, and they're getting so they can't even get out, get out of their driveway. So again, we implore you to address the street, again, for either rumble strips or some device in order to slow down the traffic, for one thing. I know we cannot stop it, but it seems that, again, I'll repeat myself, that the Mustang Trail is now the boulevard of choice for the cut-through traffic. I thank you for listening, and I hope that we could do something for the people on Mustang Trail. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Vince. Who's next? Who's the next speaker?
Next speaker, Mayor, is John Eastman, followed by Barry Nunzig.
Good evening, Council, John Eastman, one eighty-eighth Avenue. I got a couple items I'm just gonna hit fast on. Comcast has been sending out emails and letters to people telling them to update their modems, and what this is about is Comcast is slipping in Wi-Fi transmitters that are not under your control, and if these things are powered, they're creating Wi-Fi hotspots in your neighborhood, and I guess Comcast wants to have Comcast service everywhere, but they're getting individual homeowners and people with Wi-Fi to do it without their knowledge. So if they've sent you letters or emails about upgrading your, your modems, you might want to look into that, if you don't want that extra radiation in your house and consuming your electricity. Second item, where did we ever end up with door-to-door sales? Weren't we gonna do something about that, passing ordinance or adopt Davie's ordinance on door-to-door sales? We had an incident yesterday on one eighty-eighth Avenue, we had to call the police out, there was a gentleman out selling windows, and it was just not a good situation, and the Davie officer suggested that perhaps Southwest Ranches could just adopt their boilerplate on no door-to-door sales. I think we discussed it a long time ago, but nothing ever became of it.
We did.
And, you know, if you could kind of put that on the front burner, let's get that done, and Davie's ordinance works, the police like it, it's very usable, and it lets them send these folks on their way and get them out of our neighborhood. Really, in this day and age, I don't want anybody on my property. Sunday, early in the morning, Miss Diesel started, and it was the nursery over there by one ninety and Griffin Road started their grinder, and they ran it the whole day, with the exception of a few minutes they stopped to beat on it to get some stuff out that was jamming it. The church there next door, I'm sure, had some interesting services going on while all this noise, and to do that to the neighborhood on a Sunday is just not right, and, you know, that's a huge commercial hauling business there, has nothing to do with being a nursery, and I understand from code that the county has been in there trying to cite them, so, you know, keep the heat on this place, let's get them to stop doing that, and certainly, maybe some sort of inordinance about noise on the, on the Sundays, you know, don't allow them to operate that. It's very disturbing on our one day when we're all at home, and, you know, we lose our peaceful, quiet enjoyment. I want to thank the council very much on behalf of Gary Kane, you know, as you all know, Claudia passed away when she went in the canal, and just kudos to everybody getting that done, Marty as well, and let's just put some pressure on the Corps to get the permitting done, so we can get those things deployed as rapidly as possible. And I also heard some good news that the, the ones on Sterling, we might even get a little bit of extra on those, so, good deal. South Florida Water Management District, I guess the people that operate the levers and switches up there had some personnel changes, and they're not doing such a hot job, and they didn't really do the pre-storm drawdown for us here, and we ended up with high water levels going into the storm, so hopefully that can be remedied. I know South Broward did everything they could do, they were all ready, but, you know, if the gates aren't open and the water's not moving on their part, you know, their hands are tied. But we went into this last event without any pre-storm drawdown. They waited till we got the five inches of rain on Saturday before they finally got pumping, and Bob Bush has been tracking all the telemetry, and he has it all lined up, so we have the proof there. My one last item, I'm not gonna go real far into it, but my Second Amendment rights don't end when I enter this building, and when you create these, these gun-free zones, and you're not stationing a metal detector out front to screen every single person that comes through the door, you're putting me at risk, because most of us out here are concealed carry licensed, we all carry, and I don't like leaving it in the car, and you'd all be very well protected by the audience out here if somebody was to ever try any sort of aggressive activity. So I'd like to maybe get the council to look into removing that sign, and just let everybody have their rights, and I think that we'd all be happier and safer for it. History has shown, gun-free zones don't work, it's where the criminals go to cause mayhem and murder, so, all the school shootings, the theater shootings, these are all places that had that sign posted, and it makes me very uneasy, and it aggravates me that I have to suspend my constitutional rights when I want to come to a public meeting. Thank you.
Thanks, Sean.
Barry Nunzig, one sixty-third and Sterling. Well, gentlemen, I'll give you some more information about the fire department. Again, talk about the brush truck, Freddie, just so I can put your mind at ease, the town does not need a brush truck for several reasons. One, if you go back and you look at all the runs for the last three years, every brush fire, there was not a brush truck at any of them, even though the volunteers had a brush truck sitting at the station. They took the regular pumper. Now, if a situation does come up where you need a brush truck, all you need to do is call Broward County, they have a brush truck sitting at the station in Weston. It's a new brush truck, I actually gave you guys a report on that earlier in the year, and I don't have that information right now with me, but it's at the first station that's in Weston, so, this needs to be tightened up. So you have that, you don't need a brush truck, you don't need to waste that money, okay? I was good to see the Chief Bennett come up here again and just support that he tells another lie, because I remember when he was talking about getting rid of Engine eighty-two, he came up here and assured you guys of all the money that they were gonna get for Engine eighty-two. We are gonna get a fortune for that, we are gonna be able to put all that money towards the new engine, and now what happened? They just dropped it down to forty-seven thousand dollars, and still can't get a buyer. That's working out really well, isn't it? Again, just everything with the volunteers is nothing but lies and fraud. When you guys did some paperwork that I read, they talked about the fire department budget, they had it marked out as two-point-six million dollars. There was only one problem with that, that's what we paid Davie. Where was the volunteer money? That wasn't even in that little information packet that I had, it was somehow just eliminated. I'm sorry, but that's wrong. You need to tell the people what they're actually paying for. Okay, so let's go back to some other things, just little things. What else have the volunteers done, other than leave their district to come to meetings and stuff? Let's see, one of the guys was taking the engine out of the bay and hit one of the doors, because he didn't put the door down on the compartment, okay? That's not a good thing, but it was worse, because I heard that his attitude was, I don't care, that truck is a piece of trash anyway. It's not a very good attitude. What else have they done? Oh, they go to calls and they simply watch Davie do the work. That's all they do, except sometimes when they're at an auto accident, they'll take selfies. I've had people tell me that they've seen them do that. What else do they do? Well, they do take in lost dogs to make barbecue. I hope those two aren't associated, but they do that. And let's see, what else? Oh, I won't even tell you that one. That one you know about, and I'm not gonna put it out in public, even though I'd like to. You guys need to get rid of the volunteer fire department, it's just a waste of the time and the money. You need to put a real station in so that the professionals can do the job that they need. You have storms that come through, and your protection out there is gonna be lost. And regardless of what you do with the volunteers, you build that other station out there, you still gotta build that station for the professionals, the ones that can actually do the job. Stop wasting our money, these guys aren't doing anything. Why are they running that engine to every rescue call? No other city does that. They do that just so they come up here and say, oh, we ran this many calls. I've asked you guys to look at that, to ask the questions. You guys aren't asking the questions, you guys are failing your job, you need to do your job, you need to ask these questions. Tell you what I'll do, I'm such a nice guy, the memo that I sent you on May seventh, I'll send it to you again tomorrow, and you can have all the questions again, and then maybe you can ask Lee Bennett and get the real answers. Maybe this new guy who came in from Miami, maybe he'll be an honest guy and tell you the truth, that no, you don't need that engine to run every... the truth, that no, you don't need that engine to run every rescue call, because you've got a three-man rescue crew, and they can do it just fine unless they need help, and then they can call, just like everybody else does. Thank you.
Thank you. I think that concludes public comment. All right, that concludes public comment. Item number five, board reports. Any board members? Update us on the wonderful happenings with your committees?
Noel Hollingsworth, Conference E Plan. We had a situation a couple of weeks ago where we were requested to move a item from the next, our next council meeting to this meeting. And I said, "I don't have a problem unless the board members have a problem." And I asked if Emily could poll the board members to see if they had any concerns, and if there was, then we would not have it on this meeting here, but send it to the next one. And Andy interceded and said that he believed that was part, would violate sunshine and our ethics. And I would like for our attorney to discuss whether or not the chair asking our liaison to poll the board members to see if there was any concerns they had with a object that was going to be moved before the board had discussed it, and whether or not that can be done in the future. Because it was, that was deleted, and the board was not polled, but it did not end up on this agenda anyway because of constraints of time for advertising, so it'll be on the next agenda. But we have the meeting Thursday, so we won't have that problem anyway. But in the future, I'd like Keith to tell Andy whether or not, if the chair asks the liaison to poll the members as to a certain question, not whether he finds out whether or not, or any other member finds out, just whether or not there is, and if there's any concerns that they have for that going forward, to then tell the administrator to move it to the next meeting. So that's all I'm asking, not that we know what their concerns are, or what there is, just that it takes place. Thank you.
Any other board member comments? See, and known, item number five is complete. Item number six, council member comments.
Steve?
Thank you, Mayor. A few things, I did want to just also thank Bob Bush for the updates on the water levels and what's going on out there. I appreciate the time, the effort, the expense for printing that up and everything. It's really helpful to see how it's being operated, because it directly affects the residents out there. The way that is operated has a direct effect, and so I appreciate you doing that, Bob. Really appreciate it. Also, what John mentioned, and I, you know, this has been a great group effort, I certainly don't take responsibility for this, but all the progress that has been made with the guardrails out on Griffin Road, you know, everything, Mayor, the work you've done with South Florida Water Management, everybody else, you know, who's worked with the county, and all the pieces coming together is just fantastic, and I never dreamed that we would be able to respond so quickly. And we're not there yet, but it looks really good for the pieces coming together. So I just wanted to thank, you know, administration, council, attorney, everybody, just a great job in getting all this done, and the residents for being, pushing it and having it heard. John, you brought up the nursery out west with the grinding. You know, the bad news is, is that they do have the right to do that in the agricultural section they have, but you bring up a great point that, in speaking with Robert, there is options for creating an ordinance to limit the time when they do that. And right now, we're just running off of the county ordinance, which basically says that they can do it seven days a week. But I do think it's valid to look at that and see if we ought to restrict, I don't have a recommendation sitting here, because we just talked about it tonight, I'd want to think about it a little bit, but just to let you know, I think that's worth looking into, that, I'm not sure that it makes sense to have that going on seven days a week at all hours of the day and the night, you know, so we'll look at that, and we may come back with a recommendation there. The other thing, John, that you mentioned was the door-to-door sales. Let me give you a little bit of update on that. You're right, we talked about that, I'm going to say about a year or so ago, we talked about that. And I did talk to, did a little bit of research, I'm not sure if I spoke to Keith, I don't want to say exactly who it was, but anyhow, we looked around, did the research, I can't remember whether I spoke to Keith or Davie itself, but talked to them, I think it was actually Davie, Davie chief, that talked about it, but anyhow, there is no ordinance in Davie that prevents door-to-door sales there. What they do have is they have an ordinance that prevents certain types of panhandling and things like that. And so, and there were a lot of other issues in creating an ordinance specifically for door-to-door sales. So it's not something that, you know, was just forgotten or passed out of hand, it just ran into a lot of roadblocks, and there wasn't an easy model that we could use to implement here. So that's kind of where that's at. You know, I can, I'll look into it again, see if there's anything, but there was not a quick, easy solution to it, and so I wanted to let you know it wasn't, it wasn't just forgotten. And then the last thing I wanted to pass on is an interesting thing that happened just today. So I had to work a little late, we had an early meeting tonight, right? So on my, on my way here, forgot that we were going to have pizza here tonight, so I said, "I got to get something to eat on the way before I get there." So what's along the way, but Burger King's right there along the way. So I stop in there, and standing in line, and there's a couple that I actually had met before, but they remembered me, I didn't remember them, I'm probably older than they are. But at any rate, they said, "Hey, we haven't seen you in a long time." I was like, "Oh, great, you know, good to see you." And they said, "Well, you know, we're residents of Pembroke Pines, and we just wanted to thank you. We haven't seen you since those gates were closed out there, and we're just so happy that you gave us our neighborhood back." So it was, it was really a great, a great way to, you know, start the evening. And so just reassurance that, you know, we did, we did the right thing, we did the proper thing, not only for our residents, but for the Pines' residents as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Any other council member comments?
I'm good.
Freddie?
Let me skip, I've got something to...
No, absolutely. Gary?
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of things, they're more like public service announcements. We're entering a very busy fall season, and I think in November, every weekend has got something going on somewhere at one of our parks, or I know we have a car show coming up with the Parks Foundation, but we'll get more, as that flushes out, we'll talk about that more. But in October coming up, we have the hazmat at Rolling Oaks Park on the 10th. It's from, I believe it's 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. And the really, really great thing about that is if you have a lot of shredding that needs to be done, you can, you can bring all your shredding there, and it's amazing to watch four or five boxes just zoop, gone, and it saves you a lot of, a lot of aggravation and a lot of trouble. So I urge everybody to use that, that's on the 10th, it's a Saturday. And then on the 17th, we have the Country Roads Arts and Crafts Fair at the Sunshine Ranches Equestrian Park. I believe that's at 10 o'clock, too, setup will be earlier for the people maintaining booths and the whatnot. It's run by December, she's actually in charge of it, but it's like everybody there, whenever you go there, it's the entire town's there, the entire town staff. And they do such a tremendous job, and it's a lot of fun, and I urge everybody to go to that, and that's on the 17th of October, and it's another Saturday, and it's really a lot of fun, so I urge everybody to go to that. And I'll wrap it up with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary.
Mayor, if I may, I just want to jump in one thing because of what Gary brought up. On the 14th of November, the car show that, as I said, they're going to bring out more information, some of my colleagues have volunteered along with me to participate in the dunk tank. So I would like to challenge the rest of my colleagues up here, the mayor, the town attorney, to join us in this. Yeah, nice try, you can stand, it's waist-high. Anyhow, so I would tell you that I've volunteered, Councilmember Bright Cruz has volunteered, Councilmember Jablonsky has volunteered, so I need you all to put pressure on the mayor and the town attorney to participate, because I think it will get quite a few people interested in coming out there to dunk us in a dunk tank, so. So that's all I wanted to say. Yeah, there you go. So the mayor says if Keith does it, he'll do it.
Yep, absolutely. I might sit in there with him.
I haven't seen a two-seater.
It'd generate a lot of money. Call our friends. We're not going to say a public one.
It'd be a great fundraiser, we'd, I'm sure, add a lot to, to the bottom line of the event.
I assume we'll be posting the photos in Pines?
I suspect that maybe some of them will be there. So, okay. Freddie?
Yeah, what I'd like to bring for you tonight, at our MPO meeting, one of the gentlemen that sits on there from Sunrise, Sunrise has a resolution opposing them to take out, in other words, there's a bus service in the west side of, Sunrise goes through some poor sections, but it's not making any money, so they want to take it out. City of Sunrise is opposing it because these people need it, and they, so I think, you know, it could happen here. We don't have one bus service over here. I don't imagine it gets much right, but they may want to take it out. But I would like to try to see if we could support Sunrise in their resolution to eliminate this bus route. It looks like there's a chance where some poor people are going to be really hurting if they do it.
So you want to, you want to support Sunrise in keeping it, not eliminating it?
We, I want to, if you want to, we make our own resolution, or just, somehow, I want to let Sunrise know we support them on this.
But that's on keeping the bus route, not eliminating, is that correct?
Yeah, I want to keep it, yeah. I would, I'd like to, I don't guess I could make a motion that we pass a resolution, whatever I have to do, Keith.
Need a resolution for that.
I would support that.
So we'd bring it back at a later date, right?
Yes, you could put it on the next meeting.
Put it on agenda, bring it up to a later day, yeah.
Okay. That's all I got. Yep.
Absolutely.
Mayor, if I may, this is the same issue that Vice Mayor Carr spoke about when he was here, and I know that there's a workshop on Thursday that he was referencing. If it's the consensus of the council, then I will certainly let him know prior to that that the town opposes the elimination of that bus route. Because I don't know how time-sensitive getting a resolution back before you may be, and I want to make sure that your voices are heard, if that's what the vice mayor and the rest of the council want to make sure that we do.
I'm wondering if maybe, if the town administrator could write a letter and have the mayor sign it in support of retaining this, yeah, for all of us, right.
Everybody agree? Yeah, listen, I haven't had any problems doing that.
No problem.
So we did get it accomplished, you know, he had asked before.
We did, we found our way. Yes, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, that's all I got.
Okay. Just real quickly, ditto with regards to what you said, Steve, it's been a wonderful outpouring of support to get this done. And anybody that we've talked to and contacted, quite frankly, were very supportive, and special thank you to, I know Andy and Keith, and to, you know, many of the county commissioners, and I'm sure that when it comes before the vote, that I would be shocked or surprised if it wasn't unanimous. And especially to another person that I've had a lot of correspondence with and updates, very supportive of this project, Vice Chair of the South Florida Water Management District, Kevin Powers. So I want to say thank you to him. And I know that just recently, I had passed along some correspondence to Andy, and he's had some subsequent conversations to address it. I think that's been resolved with regards to some easement issues and some setback issues, but certainly not anything that's insurmountable in the process of getting that taken care of. I think the next big thing really is to get it approved by the Corps of Engineers, Army Corps of Engineers. But again, kudos to everybody that worked so hard to bring this to fruition, important project and something that needed to be done. And it's amazing how people can come together for a cause, especially one of this magnitude, and in light of what's happened out, out there on Griffin Road. So thanks to everybody, and again, thanks to Vice Chair Powers for his efforts and assisting us, me, through this process and any concerns that they have. That concludes my comment, and I'll, for the record, Doug, tell you that I accept your challenge, but I'll only do it if I can sit next to Keith, we're in that dunk tank at the same time. That's the only way that I'll, that I'll do that. And the other concern I have, he can't swim, and I don't want anything to happen to him. So I want my buddy to be next to me and keep him floating, in the event that, that we get knocked off and put in the water. I know Barry's going to spend a whole bunch of money.
I would tell you, then he better not build himself a swimming pool if he can't swim.
Exactly. That concludes my comments. Leave comments, Keith, it's your turn.
Yeah, sure, Mayor, it'll be a pleasure going with you this weekend to buy Speedos. I look forward to it. As it relates to a couple of legal issues, I'll just say, John, in regards to the concealed firearms, because you asked, I just looked, quickly looked it up on my phone, 790.053 Florida statute specifically prohibits firearms in any meeting used by county, school, board, municipality, or special district. So state law trumps us on that, so that sign is based in conformity with state law, there's nothing we can do on that, so I just want to mention that. Again, Mayor, thanks for everyone speaking about the guardrails today. It really was a full culmination of efforts, which started not only through the council, but locally through the HOA, Steve, your HOA, Bob Hartman and his whole group with their letters to the county, and it finally filtered up to when Andy, myself, Cleve, walked into the meeting with Broward County, and Andy laughed that we had guns blazing, because we walked in there with the next clerk of court who works with us, being Mitch Caesar, and then we walked in there with the next Democratic Minority Leader of the House, Katie Edwards, and both of them sitting on either side of us, with the county looking at us like, "How come everyone's here?" And the first thing out of their mouth is, "Of course we're putting this into funding for, for next year." It will be, you know, and I know you mentioned you don't know the timeframe of this, but the county really told us that they're hoping we'll see some movement by the end of the year, and that would be a really good thing for our residents. So it's been a pleasure working with everyone, and that really did come together, but it really was a team effort, and it couldn't have been done without that. In regards to just some legal updates, things that the residents might not have heard, but the council knows, when doing additional due diligence on the wall that was erected on Southwest 54th Place, we came across a judgment that was recorded several years ago that everyone missed when doing their title research, but it was directly on point, and the court had already ruled that it would be illegal to close off Southwest 54th Place when Pines, several years earlier, the predecessor in title, attempted to erect the same barricade on Southwest 54th. So as a result of the prior judgment already recorded in that matter, we are amending the complaint to bring to the judge's attention the fact that this issue was already legally decided, and we believe at that point, it will be very quick for us to go in for a motion for summary judgment, just to bring to the judge's attention that this item was already litigated, and this was the conclusion. Pines has taken the position that that didn't apply to them because they never knew it existed. But it was recorded in the public record, it did exist, and we feel very confident that once that judgment is shown, that they're going to be a little surprised when that barrier comes out. Similarly, with that barricade relates to the gates. The gates are on a platted roadway, which is Southwest 207th Terrace. It actually is in an old Miami-Dade County plat, that road is there. It was plat book two, page one of the Miami-Dade Public Records. It's about this big, but when you blow it up, you can actually see the roadway, and it clearly lines up. The irony is, and I would ask any of you to go home and try this tonight, when you go on the Broward County Property Appraiser site, you will see even today, the platted roadway still being there, because the portion of Southwest Ranches along 207th still exists. And I told Andy that I want to speak to him later on about actually paving a portion of our roadway, which would lead right into their 207th, and we could call it a day and never worry about these cases again. never worry about these cases again. So it is something that we've discussed, and I'm truly serious about looking into. But it's a platted roadway, and under the law, it basically says that anyone, if anyone bought their property in the plat, and the plat's a huge area, in Deacon County, they platted like all of Southwest Ranches in one quadrant, but if anyone bought their property in reliance upon the fact that they would have that roadway one day, it didn't have to be built yet, but one day, those are the affected property owners that could prevent a road from being blocked. And it's our position that since it was platted, they could not put up that gate, and that gate was placed there illegally. So a lot of research has gone into determining a lot of these issues, but it's clear to me in our discussion with Pines Legal Council, that they had no knowledge of the prior case, nor did they have even knowledge that the roadway had been platted before they chose to do what they did. So we're hopeful that the information found will actually help to speed up these cases, because these are not cases like a CCA case, where it's long-out, drawn-out case of depositions and, you know, discovery, these are very simple. This is what the law says, this is what they did, and Judge, we want you to apply the law to the facts. So we're hopeful that the information that we've obtained over the last two weeks will help speed up the process. And that's it for now.
Thanks, Keith, if you wear a Speedo, I will too.
By the way, Mayor, just because you brought this up, I never get to say this, but, you know, a lot of people's, you know, we speak internally about the fact that we work here because truly we love it, you know, it's a great environment here, and I just want to tell everyone that with, even with sitting here now, you know, I quickly posted on Facebook that Barton Kier was here for Yellow Dot, and I already got a text from Erica saying, please say hi to everyone for me, Peter Brill, how's everyone doing? So, you know, even all the former employees, you know, still mention the fact constantly that they love this place and would love to be here today.
It's a special place, no question about that, very unique, very special. All right, that concludes item number seven. Andy, I don't know if you can top it, but you're on.
I'm not even gonna try, Mayor. I'll actually be very brief tonight, I just got a couple of guardrail-related comments, I know we've all been talking about the guardrails to go along Griffin Road, and, you know, at this point, I've been in this business for quite a while, and it's rare that I'm surprised. Things don't always go the way I expect them to go, but I'm rarely surprised, and I will tell you that I'm very pleasantly surprised by how fast that process has gone with those guardrails. We met with the county a couple of weeks ago, they told us that they were gonna begin the design phase, and that they were gonna move it along. First of all, I was already surprised it was gonna be in the next fiscal year budget, so that was already good news. They were starting to move on it, Mayor, you and I, you know, spoke earlier this week, they've already gotten their preliminary design to South Florida Water Management District, the Water Management District has already had their first review and gotten back to the county, the county's in the process of making their revisions, and they expect to have their application into South Florida Water Management District this week. So it's, as I said, it's rare that I'm surprised, but I am incredibly pleased by how fast that process has gone. Really been a good thing. Second item, I'm gonna stay on guardrails, I'm gonna move over to Sterling Road, and tell you that in two weeks' time, that item will be before you, we've gone out to bid on that, and that's coming before the council, but I want, I know that there's been a preference expressed in the past for the weathered guardrail material, which exists along Griffin Road, it's nowhere else in town, all the other guardrail in town is the traditional non, I'll say, non-weathered look. The item that we're gonna bring you is gonna be for that same, that same non-weathered. The weathered guardrail doesn't exist anymore, in order for us to get to that same product, we would have to paint it in order to get to that, so there's an additional expense with that. We don't know how well that paint's gonna hold up, and then it's gonna require ongoing maintenance to repaint it, so we're gonna stay with the traditional, I'll say silver or galvanized guardrails, the product that you'll see, that's the item that'll be before you, but as long as we're out there protecting the public, we're moving forward with Sterling Road, we're moving forward with Griffin Road, certainly all good news on that front, and that's really all I have tonight, Mayor, thank you.
Great news, Andy, thank you. Okay, that concludes item number eight. Item number nine, again, this is an ordinance, second reading. Russell, and then over to Jeff.
An ordinance of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, amending the town's Unified Land Development Code to reflect changes in the Florida statutes governing municipal regulation of farms. Amending Article 155 entitled Non-Commercial Farms Special Exceptions to modify conditions applicable to such special exceptions and to the continued use of existing non-residential agricultural structures on non-commercial farms, providing for severability, providing for codification, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you, Russell.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, got a motion and a second to approve, any members of the public wish to comment on this item? See no public comment, public comment is now closed. Again, we have a motion and a second to approve, any additional questions, comments, or concerns, council? Seeing none, Russell, call the question.
Councilmember Brighters?
Yes.
Councilmember McKay?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fiskelli?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes, item number 10.
This is an ordinance for first reading, an ordinance of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, amending Article 40 telecommunications towers and antennas of the land development code, providing for severability, repealer, codification, and an effective date.
Andy?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, this is another item that's come out of the Comprehensive Plan Advisory Board, they had help from Gary Resnick, who's an attorney in the telecommunications industry, and has rewritten our code and updated it. I would tell you how current it is, but I don't want to take any wind out of the sails of the board chair, who I know is prepared to share that information with you. So if that's with me to your approval, Mayor, I'd like to ask Mr. Hollingsworth to speak to the item a little bit.
Motion to approve first, if we could.
Second.
Motion is second to approve, and again, we turn it over to the public for a public comment. Noel.
Noel Hollingsworth, Chair of the Comprehensive Plan, and was assigned telecommunications ordinance, update. This started out by us taking a look at the boxes that were being placed in other municipalities up on the telephone poles that were very ugly, and being placed in front of people's homes, and they were objecting to it, so we thought we'd get ahead of the curve. We found out when we were investigating this, that our telecommunications ordinance was 15 years behind the times. So we put it out for bid, and Mr. Resnick won the bid, and we were very lucky to get him, because he is preeminent in the field of this, and sits on various federal boards for telecommunications. And as of us taking a look at it for the first time, it was up to date as of May of this year. So this will be the boilerplate that any other municipality wants to take a look at and bring theirs up to date. And it also gives us some protection that is available on these local area boxes that they're putting in towers, mini-towers on telephone poles, and we'll label it, and basically that's it. So we're up to date, everything's been changed, and if you took a look at the ordinance itself, there's one definition in there that's about a page long, and we were talking about breaking it up, but then figured out, Mr. Resnick told us, that was the federal definition of that. And so therefore, since everyone is the same on that, we left it alone, and it's just an ungodly definition, but that's the federal government, thank you very much.
Thank you, Noel. Any additional public comment? See no further public comment, public comment is now closed. Again, we have a motion and a second to approve, any additional questions, comments, or concerns, council? Seeing none, call the question, please, Russell.
Councilmember Brighters?
Yes.
Councilmember McKay?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fiskelli?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes, item number 11.
This is a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, approving an unanticipated expense not to exceed $15,000 for planning, approving a fiscal year 2014-2015 budgetary appropriation between general fund accounts, authorizing the mayor, town administrator, town financial administrator, and town attorney to execute the work authorization and providing an effective date.
Thank you, Russell. Andy?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, this is, to a certain extent, a housekeeping resolution, you may recall, on the farm ordinance, which passed on second reading earlier tonight, at first reading, within the body of that ordinance, there was some language that allowed for funding some of those expenses. Council expressed an interest that we break that out from that ordinance, we've done that, so this is back before you as a standalone resolution in support of that ordinance that you've already passed.
Thank you, Andy. Council?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second to approve, any members of public wish to comment on this item? Seeing none, public comment is now closed. Again, we have a motion and a second to approve, any additional questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, Russell, call the question, please.
Councilmember Brighters?
Yes.
Councilmember McKay?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fiskelli?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes, item number 12, approval of minutes for the August 13, 2015 Special Town Council Meeting, the August 13, 2015 Regular Town Council Meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second to approve, and I know Noel reads the minutes, so we're gonna open it up to public comment, in case any issues or concerns about those minutes, seeing none, public comment is now closed. Again, we have a motion and a second to, phew, approve. See no additional questions, comments, or concerns from council, call the question, please, Russell.
Councilmember Brighters?
Yes.
Councilmember McKay?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fiskelli?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes, and I'm sure it is a consensus, that concludes tonight's regular council meeting agenda. This meeting is hereby adjourned. Congratulations, you guys set a record for three...